Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the candidate forum for the positions of Grants Pass City Council and Mayor. My name is Terry Hopkins. I proudly serve as the President and CEO of the Grants Pass and Josephine County Chamber of Commerce. The forum is hosted by the Grants Pass and Josephine County Chamber of Commerce along with the Daily Courier. It is a testament to the importance of our civic engagement and the responsibility we all share in shaping the future of our community. Voting is not just a right, but a critical way for each of us to have a voice in the policies and decisions that affect our community, our economy, and our families. The choices we make at the ballot box have a lasting impact on the prosperity of our community and Oregon as a whole. That's why tonight is so important. We are bringing together the candidates running for Mayor and City Council so that you, the voters, can better understand their values, their strategies, and how they plan to support our community through their positions in elected leadership. I'm honored to be joined this evening by Edith Decker, Features Editor of the Daily Courier. Edith's esteemed career has spanned over 30 years with the Courier, and the Chamber has had the privilege of partnering with her on many of these candidate forums. Edith, if I may, I will turn it over to you to introduce the candidates this evening.
Thank you. So, we have two candidates for Mayor. Beginning at our left, we have Sarah Bristol, the incumbent, and we have her challenger Clint Scherf. Then, the people of Grants Pass are represented on the City Council. There are two councillors for each ward, and there are four wards. Half of those city councillors will be determined in November at the election. So, we have for Ward One, which is roughly the northwest, we have the incumbent Brian Delagrange and his challenger Indra Nicholas. For Ward Two, which is roughly the northeast area of Grants Pass, we have an is open. We have two people, two candidates, Victoria Marshall and Jay Meredith. Ward Three, which is roughly south of the river and south of Redwood Highway, we have another open ward, only one candidate, he's feeling relaxed right now, Eric Schlegel. And Ward Four, which is the southwest of Grants Pass and also the Redwood area, we have the incumbent Vanessa O'J and her and two people running against her, Mark Kelsey and Kathleen Crone. So, that's 10 people. We have quite a few questions for you guys, and so we should probably get started. So, thank you for joining us this evening. So, here's the format this evening. Each candidate gets two minutes for self-introduction, to introduce yourselves. Then, we have, as I said, a lot of questions. Everyone will get 90 seconds per question, and then two minutes for closing comments, everyone. So, there's a timer. Julie in the back is our timer. The light will turn yellow, and then you'll hear a beep, a frightening, frightening beep. That means you only have 30 seconds left to wrap up. So, and then the red light turns on, and then serious, that gets serious then. The red light turns on when you're done. So, we will begin by choosing someone to go first for our first question, and it looks like it's Mr. Schlegel to do, sorry, to do the opening comments. So, and then we'll just go, you know, down and then back to the beginning and go through. So, everyone gets a chance to be first, hopefully, and everyone gets a chance to be last. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, friends and neighbors of Grants Pass. I'm Eric Schlegel, and I'm honored to be your candidate for City Council Ward Three. I work at Timber Products here in Grants Pass as the Maintenance Planner. I served in the Marine Corps for over 26 years and retired as a Major. My wife, being raised here in southern Oregon, brought us to Rogue Valley often, and we decided to make Grants Pass our home. We have two daughters, two beautiful daughters, one a college graduate and the other halfway through her degree. Like all of you, I want our families to feel safe here again. While living here, I've seen our city decline over the last four years. Driving by these homeless camps every day, I've gotten sick and tired of being sick and tired. Decisions by past leadership have pushed our city into decline. Relocating the homeless to these camps has only multiplied the problem. The addicts are still using the parks as a place to do drugs late at night. I believe in helping people, but they must be willing to help themselves first. Keeping our parks and public spaces free of drugs and camping will be our first priority. To do this, law enforcement must be fully funded, returning the decision-making to their expertise and leadership. I'm a constitutional conservative. I'm here to serve you as faithfully as I served our country. Thank you for your time, your trust, and your commitment to Grants Pass. It's time for real leadership. It's time for change.
Thank you. Ms. O'J?
Thank you to the Daily Courier and the Chamber of Commerce for holding this meeting. I think it's really important that the community can hear from their local candidates. My name is Vanessa O'J. I am the current City Council President, representing Ward Four, rounding out the beginning, the end of my first term. I am lucky to say that I've lived in Josephine County almost my entire life. I was moved here as a child, and I grew up in Merlin when I moved to Grants Pass as an adult. My career is working for a dispatch, as a dispatcher for the Oregon State Police. When I originally ran for office, I promised to be a housing advocate, and I have kept that promise. Since 2021, this council has directly incentivized over 400 housing units, and this is ranging from affordable to market-rate senior and family housing. We've established a successful revolving housing fund that continues to support low-income housing development. Looking ahead, I'll continue to support housing development that our community desperately needs. I do have a unique perspective on the challenges faced by our police, fire, and dispatch services, both in terms of the needed funding as a councillor, and the increasing demands on their services as a dispatcher. As our community grows, we must ensure that our public safety divisions keep pace with it while balancing protections against major tax hikes. I do look forward to continuing in this, the work in this arena, and to help find community-supported solutions to help our police and fire departments grow in the way, in the ways that they need to keep pace with our community's growth and service-level expectations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kelsey?
My name is Mark Kelsey. I've lived here 45 of my 48 years. Truck driver by trade, day truck driver. I have three kids, two teenagers and an adult now. One goes to Hidden Valley, one goes to Gladiola getting a GED. I think the past four years, we've seen a real decline in Grants Pass. I think some changes need to be made, and we need to start taking an opposite direction. With this federal lawsuit that just came back to us, the state has a bill in place right now that needs to go away, and I think by that injunction being lifted from the federal side, we can totally go against what the state has to say about it. I want to represent everybody here. I am a Republican, but I want to go centerline and listen to everybody because this is a nonpartisan position. I just want to thank everybody for showing up tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Crone?
My name's Kathleen. My name's Kathleen Crone, and I thank you residents of Grants Pass for attending tonight to hear what we have to say. I came here 14 years ago looking for a job as a drug and alcohol councillor. I found that job. It was not hard. There are lots of avenues to get this kind of work here in this small area, which really surprised me. Anyway, I had a successful career with choices, with options for southern Oregon for 13 years, and retired in January. When I retired, I, well, during the time of COVID and all the mandates and all the crazy stuff happening, I started informing myself about what was going on in our country. I had, I was hearing that different types of nonconstitutional things were starting to take place, and that things were going in a different direction that was originally entrusted to in this country in the beginning. And then, I was encouraged to look at my local level, because that's where real change could be, could come into play. So, when I retired, I decided to volunteer with the Republican Party here locally, and I was so pleasantly surprised to see the camaraderie, the activity, the high profile that our local Republican Party has. I got involved and became a precinct committee worker. I did some canvassing, and one thing led to the next, and here I am, being asked to run for City Council. I am a dedicated person. I do not give up easy. I will go the extra mile to make the changes necessary to restore the quality of life that people in Grants Pass used to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bristol?
Hi. My name is Sarah Bristol. I'm the current Mayor of Grants Pass. I am a Grants Pass native and a Grants Pass High School graduate. I've been involved in a number of leadership roles over the years, and my career background is that I was a former journalist, and now I work in the Marketing Department at Rogue Community College, where I'm proud to be part of the workforce development for this local community here. As Mayor, I've served on SO Ready, and now the Rogue Workforce Partnership, and so part of economic development is, part of what I've been focusing on here, in addition to obviously the homelessness problem, which has plagued our city for several years now. We did have a federal lawsuit that we had to deal with, and now that that's behind us, I think the City Council has effectively worked on moving people out of the parks. We need to continue to work on long-term solutions for managing our homeless problem. But I think there's quite a bit of misunderstanding and misinformation on the part of some of our challengers on what the city's role and what we've been able to do or not do. I would say that one of the really important things about being Mayor is independence, and I am not part of a political party. This is a nonpartisan position. The Mayor is separate from the council and also should represent the community as a whole, and I believe that I do that. I'm really proud to be living here in Grants Pass. I think we have a wonderful community. That's why I moved back here to help raise my children here in the town where my family lives. And I just want to also say that I really, I really love it here, and I think that it's important for us to stay positive about dealing with our problems. We have to confront them and deal with them with realistic solutions, and that's what I'm all about. So, thanks for having us here tonight and being part of this process.
Thank you. Mr. Scherf?
Hello. Thank you all for coming. My name is Clint Scherf. I am actually running for the position of Mayor, and I was born and raised here. Grew up in Cloverland area, worked my way all the way out to Murphy and Williams area, and went to Hidden Valley High School, graduated from there. As soon as I graduated, I went to Clamath Falls to go to college. After I got done with college, I came back here, but there wasn't work for me to start a career, so I did leave and got buried and raised my family in the state of Arizona, and to bring them back in 2017 to try to have my kids have a little semblance of how I grew up here in this beautiful area. It's a bit different, so I was a little disheartened back in 2017 and tried to get involved with the city government. I used my skills in land development to serve on the Urban Planning Commission and help the city develop, and help developers in the private sector navigate the rules and regulations of the city. From there, I actually did some time sitting behind this bench in the council for 2018, 2019. So, I do have some judicial experience that comes along with this position. After that, I actually went back to the Urban Planning Commission and worked with them for another couple of years. I am currently running to take the Mayor's position just because of the screams and the outcries from the community. What I'm getting from the community is that that the current council and Mayor haven't listened to them for the last three and a half years, and the semblance of the word "change" keeps coming up. And so, I sit here before you guys to give you a little bit about me and to offer change. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Delagrange?
Hi. Thank you for hosting tonight, Chamber of Commerce and Courier. My name is Brian Delagrange. I am a current City Councillor in Ward One, finishing up my first term. I was born in Grants Pass and went all through grade school, middle school, high school here, graduated, went into the Air Force, and I finished up my degree at the University of Oregon with a business degree. And I moved back here about 10 years ago to raise my daughter, and the reason I originally ran for council four years ago is because I saw the previous council making a lot of bad decisions, and I knew that I could do better than what was being done. So, just to remind everyone where we were at four years ago, because I've heard that there's been a real decline over the past four years. So, when I took office, we inherited the homeless lawsuit from the Republican Council prior to us. So, we had to deal with that, and we have dealt with that, and that lawsuit is behind us, and we've gotten the homeless out of the parks. We inherited a housing crisis from the previous council, and we have helped incentivize over 400 housing units that are currently in the pipeline that would not have been in the pipeline without council action. We have balanced the budget. We inherited a $2 million budget shortfall from the previous council. We balanced that. So, when they're talking about the decline, the decline is something that we've been working to fix over the past four years, and it's a long process. These things can't be solved in one year. The housing crisis can't be solved in one year. The homeless crisis, you know, as we all know, may never be solved. It can only be mitigated. So, we have taken action. We have produced results, and I hope that I can have another four years to help produce more results for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholas?
Hi. My name is Indra Nicholas, and I'm excited to be a candidate for Grants Pass City Council. I'm originally from Kansas City, Missouri, and winded up in Sacramento for 10 years, where started a family, had one child, and then decided to move out of the bustling big city and into a small town where people valued family and never had been here to Oregon in 10 years in Sacramento. So, my first trip up here, I just remember it was so beautiful, and we actually just came up to buy a house and was, I was teaching in Sacramento. I got my K-12 teaching credential and master's there. We got a leave of absence, had no jobs here, just came up, pretty sure we hopefully would find a job and raise children here. And, and it was beautiful and family-friendly. My children played in the parks, went to Grants Pass High School, did lots of activities. I, after, I substituted at Grants Pass High School for a number of years, and then I started a business, a senior care business, where we cared for seniors to help them stay independent in their homes longer. Did that for 12 years. That was a franchise company. And then I opened another business, which is an ice cream shop at the north end of town. So, I've had a business here. I've worked with seniors. I've worked with children. I love living here. Imagine bringing your family here now, driving down the street. Would you want to stay, raise your family, and open a business here after you see all of the homeless loitering on our streets and in the parks? I would never have stayed here if I saw today, if I saw then what I see today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity, friends and neighbors. My name is Victoria Marshall, and I'm running for City Council because I believe Grants Pass can be fixed. A dedication to the freedom that is guaranteed in our Constitution made Grants Pass strong. This is worth defending, and I intend to do it. When I moved here in 1996, I moved to a town that built schools, trusting that their children would be safe and educated, a community that was thriving with celebrations like boat nick and bears and back to the 50s. We came together to build things and community. But our community is becoming unrecognizable, unsafe, and it is unraveling. There is a yearning in my heart to stand up for the spirit of Grants Pass. We don't have to become Portland. The problems we have can be fixed, but we need new leadership to do it. As a former teacher and debate coach, I spent my career helping young people find their voices, stand for truth, and succeed through hard work and dedication, because I believe Americans have not only a right to be free, but also a duty to be free. We need leaders who believe this is true. We can return to the place where our families thrive and our businesses grow, and freedom with responsibility is respected. Galatians 5:1 tells us that it is for freedom that Christ has made us free. This principle is encoded in our Constitution. It is glorious, and it leaves no one behind. With this, I humbly ask you to vote for me, Victoria Marshall, along with our entire slate of conservative candidates. Together, we will face our problems and fix our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Meredith?
Hi. Good evening. Thanks to the Chamber and the Courier for putting this on tonight. My name is Jay Meredith, and I am a candidate for Ward Two, which is the north, generally the northeast section of town. I've actually lived or worked in all four sections of town. Not that Grants Pass is huge, but I know Grants Pass really well. I moved here, I moved my small business here 18 years ago because my wife and I at the time were looking for a nice place to raise our young family. We hadn't even started a family at the time. So, we now have two wonderful boys. One is in north, north middle school, and one's just started at Grants Pass High School, and they've never known anywhere but Grants Pass, and we just bought a house a couple of years ago, and so Grants Pass is, has been home and will be home for many years to come. And, and I am ready and willing to do my part to keep Grants Pass a lovely place to live for, especially for younger families. So, I have a, I have a ton of experience working with the city and dealing with the kind of issues that the City Council deals with on a regular basis. So, I found myself working in the Finance Department for the City of Grants Pass, starting in 2008. I spent 12 years working for the City of Grants Pass, and the years between 2010 and 2020, I was actually the city's Finance Director. So, other than maybe one council member who's in the room tonight, I've probably spent more time in this room than just about anybody that is in this room. Have a, I'm a CPA by profession. I've spent half my career in private industry and half working for the City of Grants Pass. I know all the issues inside out, and I'm a huge public safety, police, and fire, law enforcement advocate, and I've spent a lot of time both on the job and off the job advocating for local law enforcement and local public safety. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, candidates, for the introduction. We will dive into some of the questions. Just a reminder, we moved from the two minutes to 90 seconds for the questions. This question's going to begin with Ms. Crone. Ms. Crone, what would you do to address the current issues we face with the unhoused population? And also specifically, do you support managed campsites in principle?
Well, so, as a former drug and alcohol councillor, I am convinced that enabling the homeless shuts down their incentives to, first of all, join or participate in society, follow rules like everybody else has to, and it perpetuates the problem. I am not for the camps. I am not for perpetuating the problem. I think we have a beautiful shelter that is adequate. I think that, one, for the adults at the Gospel Rescue Mission and for the youth with hearts with the mission. They are both self-supporting. They don't take any taxpayer money, and they are financing other programs that will benefit the city. I, I know how addiction works and people's thinking. It is not logical. We need change. We need to approach this problem differently, and we need to give people choices, reasonable choices, to either take the choices or move on. Medford is doing that now, and that's why we have like 50% of the out-of-county homeless that we do, because they're coming here, because Medford's giving choices. I, I will do something different. We need change, and we need new leadership.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Bristol?
Thank you. Yeah, as part of the city leadership for the past four years, I'm very familiar with this homeless situation and the lawsuit that we've had to deal with and the injunction. Now that the injunction is behind us, we're able to make some different changes, choices than we were able to over the course of the last four years. However, I have and will continue to advocate for a managed campsite or shelter, maybe both. And the reason for that is that state law right now especially requires us to have a place where unhoused people can go and sleep. So, we don't have to enable people, so to speak, but we do have to provide a place where they can be legally, and that's why the City Council has made the choice that it did in setting up these two temporary sites that we currently have in place. I think we will continue to work through a longer-term solution. We do need these sites to be managed. Right now, they are completely unmanaged, and they should be supervised 24/7 with some rules in place. The Gospel Rescue Mission is not a regular shelter. It's a job program, and there are a number of people in this community who are too old or too disabled and that they're not going to return to the workforce, so we need to have a place legally that works for them. It's very important that people understand this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scherf?
Yeah, so the homeless is an issue in our town, and it's actually kind of, it's affecting everybody that lives and works and visits our town. I am 100% against having a city-owned facility. Having a city-owned facility or a facility of social services on city-owned property is nothing but a liability nightmare. You already have another lawsuit coming down the pike. Probably should see it in about 90 days. So, that's kind of a bad move on, on the current council and Mayor's part. There is this, the Supreme Court overturned a lawsuit, as well as in that doctrine, they acknowledged the Gospel Rescue Mission as a viable shelter, even though it does have some religious undertones to it. It is not necessarily a job-share area. It's, they will house men and women. They will house them separately. It doesn't have a family facility, so that's something that can be expanded upon. But currently, we have upwards of 80 nonprofits and religious groups in this area that have, in the last six years, not stepped up to do anything. This is community-driven. If the community wants it, it will be done by these nonprofits and religious groups. I think the city can be a facilitary, facilitator for those groups, and actually can be a conduit for federal and state money, but that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Delagrange?
Yeah, thank you. The unhoused population is not an easily solvable problem. Point to a community where they've solved it, and let's just do what they're doing. There's not a community that has solved it. So, there's no easy solutions. However, by providing a place for people to rest, that is not enabling. That is keeping them from being in business doorways. That is keeping them from hiding and camping in neighborhoods. That's keeping them from camping on the outskirts of town where they could start a fire that could threaten the city. So, it's not as simple as saying that having a gravel lot with a porta potty is enabling. I think that's going a little far. That gives them a small little piece of stability that hopefully they can build on. We're not providing anything other than trash and bathrooms at those facilities, and I would encourage the candidates running against the current council to provide specifics on the change that they advertise to the voters, because I haven't heard any specifics, and I want to hear what they'll do different, because if it's just no camps, that's going to be a bad move for the city, and it's not going to go well.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholas?
There's so much to say on this issue. I agree with Kathleen. She's a drug and alcohol expert, so I agree with what she said. I also agree with Clint that the city should not be in any way in the homelessness business. We're, we've heard some things about how much the current City Council has done these last four years. years, but honestly, I do not see it. As I said before, my children grew up here, I've lived here over twenty-eight years, they are all, but one is still in college up north, but they're out of the state. I would not want my grandchildren to grow up here. And I know so many people that are leaving or have left, so when they say they inherited all these problems, yes, maybe they inherited some problems, but you had four years to actually take action. So there's a lot of talk about you don't have a plan, and we did this and that, but there is no action. The leadership is abysmal, and we see that. Just look out there. The gravel lots for people is cruel and inhumane, and nobody should live like that. Why, after the injunction, wasn't there something in place better than where they are putting them now? You had years to decide on that. So there's a lot of things I don't get. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Yes, gravel lots and porta-potties is not something that the city needs to be providing, because as Clint Scherf said specifically, we have many nonprofits that would be perfectly able to take this over, and that's where we should hand this to, and the city should focus on treatment. HB 3115 says that our measures need to be objectively reasonable. That is objectively reasonable. So we do not need to be in the homelessness business. It's putting us in danger, as was mentioned previously. We are probably going to be facing another lawsuit. Let's hope that that does not happen. That was directly because of the city council. Three people who are sitting up here today decided that we had to run these camps. They're dangerous, they are not helping people, and we do have, just by saying we want to focus on treatment, there is a specific, there's something specific for you right there. We have a drug and alcohol counselor here, who knows? That's what we need to do. Seventy-five percent of homeless people have a drug addiction problem. We can't be throwing them all into the same spot and think that everything is going to be okay. It's not, it's not okay. We're in danger of another lawsuit. Fifty percent of the calls the police takes are from the homeless, and we need a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Meredith?
So I prefer to focus on potential solutions rather than complaining about the issues, because that's how we move forward and get things done. The federal law is somewhat settled, at least to some degree. Our main challenge right now is the state law that says if you regulate where somebody can rest or camp, you have to, you have to provide some, you know, regulations related to where they can rest or camp. So, as it stands right now, I would love to see some state law changes, and I hope we can work with our state representatives to do that, but as of right now, we have to legally provide somewhere where they can rest or camp. So, what do we do? The unmanaged sites are not working. They're horrible, they're, they've turned into drug, drug camps. That's not good for anybody, and it's really not good for the neighboring businesses and anybody that's neighboring these properties. So that is not a solution. That needs to change yesterday. What we can do is we can provide, we can work with partners in the nonprofit sector. Hopefully, we can find someone to help manage a site, because the city can't provide for operations. The city may be able to provide a site to do this, and the best site that I know of is a site that's about a mile outside of town on Foothill Boulevard. If it's managed properly, they won't bug the neighbors, and that needs to be studied. As I mentioned to the city council a couple of weeks ago in the last city council meeting, that option needs to be studied immediately. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Schlegel?
Well, Jay, stating facts is not complaining here, okay? So, the thing is, we, we live here in Grants Pass, and I'm sure everybody is pretty much sick and tired of it, to include the businesses, the individual, individuals that have to live here. I've had a friend that came up to me just this very day, today. He works over at Timber Products with me, and he had to go home at lunchtime because they told him he had vagrants crawling around his home, searching for things to break into his house and take, so that he can, they can use those things for selling it and buying drugs. The drug problem is a big issue here. I am not for the homeless camps, to answer the question. Very not, very much not for the homeless camps. Now, the thing is, these homeless camps, they go unchecked, and I coined the term last time, hopeless camp, because that's what it is. They are going, these people go into these camps being hopeless. There's nothing for them to strive for. There's no challenge, there's nothing. They go in there, they do their drugs, and then it's all over for them. What is the end game here for these poor unfortunate souls? It's grotesque. Now, when they, when we're talking, we have no solutions, the solution is to shut these places down, because no city should have to deal with it. And the injunction is far past it. We had the Supreme Court, which got rid of it. So, that's that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'J.
What is being done right now is abiding by House Bill 3115, state law. The gravel lots are a compliance with this law. So the only way to get rid of time, place, and manner requirements would be to not regulate homelessness whatsoever, which is advocating for absolute lawlessness. And this would mean people camping in landscaping strips, public right-of-ways in front of businesses, and anywhere that they decide to place themselves. This council has been accused of not listening to constituents, but I would like to remind our challengers that we held in June a listening and learning session, where our legal counsel had said that we were required to designate four parks for camping. After listening to the community, we then shifted from utilizing four parks to using two vacant city lots, which is what we have today. No one on this council is advocating for city-owned or a city-operated shelter. We are simply advocating, I, myself, and the minority are advocating for a low-barrier shelter. For context, this is not a free-for-all. This is a managed site that moves people off of public property. It makes the job of our police easier, because it immediately separates those that want help and those that do not. It's important that community members, neighbors of a location, city, county, and state legislators come together and work on this issue.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Kelsey?
First off, I'd like to say that these areas that we have now do need to be monitored. We only need one area. We don't need two. By monitoring this one area, you have sign-in-and-out rules which eliminate the need to move them every seven days, giving us stability, giving us watch power over them the whole time. Number two, we need to approach the commissioners again and declare a state of emergency in Josephine County. This is an emergency on both sides. We need the money from the state. You know, we're paying three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand this next year for garbage cans, fencing, and porta-potties. We shouldn't have to pay for that. The city, the state wants this bill in place, let them pay for it. It is not the city's responsibility. Drug and alcohol centers are not the city's responsibility. So I don't know why you keep pushing that. The city can't do nothing about that. That's a state issue, and that's state funding. The city doesn't pay for those. Thank you.
All right. Question two, we'll begin with the lucky winner, Clint Scherf, and move along. So the second question is, our police and fire chiefs have repeatedly reported a need for increased staffing. Would you support increased staffing for public safety? And if so, how would you pay for that?
Police have asked for increased staffing. I would love to give the police more staffing. I think it has to be approached from both angles. Like stated earlier here, the majority of their time, both the police and the fire department, are dealing with the homeless. So it's, the topics go hand in hand. We need to address both of them at the same time. I would love to give the police more power and more funding. One thing I would like to do is go through our records. Property taxes are what pay our public safety one hundred percent, and then there's levies on top of that, but the majority of that comes from your tax base, property tax base. As I mentioned earlier, you have eighty-plus, or just shy of eighty, I want to be correct in that, nonprofits and religious groups, as well as you have a lot of medical facilities. All of these operate underneath a 501(c) blanket. That's a tax-exempt blanket. So, can't we go through the property taxes and see who hasn't been paying property taxes and try to figure out something to capture those unrealized property taxes? That could go directly to funding fire and police.
Thank you. Mr. De La Grange?
Thank you. Yeah, we've been facing a growing issue with police and fire funding for several years now. Property tax goes up three percent a year, and expenses go up more than that every year, on average, anywhere from five to eight percent. So, the gap has been growing for years. This is a real problem, and we're at the point now to where we either need to do one of two things. We need to identify additional funding, or we need to start cutting services, because there's really no other options we have. And I can speak for myself, and I think pretty much the entire council, that we don't think cutting police and fire services is a good idea. So that leaves the other option, which is identifying additional funding for police and fire. And that's a tough nut to crack. I don't think taxing the nonprofits and the churches is going to get us the millions of dollars we need to close that gap. The two viable options that we have touched on in the past that do hold some promise is a corporate tax for large corporate businesses that I think needs to be explored further and is working successfully in other parts of the state. That would take the burden off of local residents. And then the wildly unpopular option is a sales tax, and the one good thing about that option is anyone that comes into the community helps to pay for our police and fire. So, it's tough, but those are, those are the options we're looking at.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholas?
Public safety is a top priority for me. I guess as a business owner and having to solve multiple problems and take action, I look at it a little bit differently than people who have been in the government and work. So, we definitely need to prioritize essential services. We went, I went to the fire station, they have equipment from 2007 that you can't even get parts for, breathing equipment to go fight fires. That's a travesty. We need to support that. How do you raise money? I think our current city council, they just put the twelve-dollar fee on our water tax bill, so it's all about tax, 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 and raising fees for citizens. Well, people on fixed incomes can't maybe pay twelve dollars a month. It seems so little, but it's not to many people. And then they spent three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, which is going to go to five-hundred-thousand or more, for the homeless camps. So they're spending that money, and they will come back to you to ask for more, time and again. We need to increase our tax base. How do we do that? By inviting business in and more residents to live here and building. And with the current situation out there, no one is going to want to come here to build, to have a family, or to open a business. We must fix the homeless problem first. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Yes, we must increase our tax base. Currently, it is estimated that our city owns about two-hundred-million dollars in property that could be sold, and that could be put into a tax, into a tax base. And so, there, there is, there is something that the, that the city can do there. Once again, just to repeat, this current council took three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars out of the general fund just to, for equipment for the homeless camps, and that is something that would need to be paid for again, over and over and over again. And the city just needs to get out of these, the homelessness business. It can be turned over to nonprofits, and that would not be violating SB 3115. I'd also like to point out once again that the twelve, I think it was the twelve-dollar, the water fee, it's been eaten up by the homeless encampments. And so they're going to come back to you to tax again, and, but we have better ideas for investing in infrastructure and expanding the tax base and looking into more tourism that would bring more money into the city, and instead of taxing, there are things that we can do. So the future isn't bleak. We can make a brighter future for Grants Pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Meredith?
The big question that the council has wrestled with for a few years now, as far as how to, how to best fund police and fire in Grants Pass, is, is one that I'm, I definitely can contribute the best series of solutions to, because I participated in that discussion. Current council will tell you that they heard from me regularly during that discussion. And the good news is, in my opinion, the issue has been solved for the short term or intermediate term. For the next three to five years, we don't have to make any further changes to taxes or fees to meet our short-term obligations. We can hire, the most recent round of discussions, the two chiefs recommended that we hire eight more public safety professionals, four more police officers, three more firefighters, and one professional that would maintain the public safety facilities. We can do that right now without any changes to taxes or fees, and we can maintain that for at least three to five years. So, if you, in fact, I was, the chamber will recall that I worked closely with the business community to help describe to the city council that the food, the restaurant tax and the sales tax was a bad idea, because the public wouldn't support it. And, and I showed the math behind how we can hire those additional public safety professionals that we need without any further changes to taxes or fees, and I, and I stick to that to this day. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Schlegel?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Our police and fire chiefs have repeatedly reported a need for increased staffing. Would you support increased staffing for public safety? And if so, how would you pay for that?
It's very simple. So, increased staffing, yes, I support it, hundred percent. These, the rescue workers, firefighters, and the police department, they're the ones that we have to actually empower. We have to make sure that they make the decisions. They are the ones that are going to solve this problem. The homeless issue is a big deal. The majority of the problems that we have are from the drug addicts that are, that are there. So we have to make sure that, that the law enforcement and police department, that they get their, their pay. I would, I would ask also, I'm just wondering, how many people, how many of the current council have, have been on a ride-along to see what it really is like out there? I'm, I'm willing to say that the majority of the council are out of touch, and they don't know what exactly it is that is happening out there, what life is really like. So how we're going to, how we're going to fund this issue? Well, for one thing, we're going to stop with the, with the homeless camps, paying three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars for a homeless camp, and that's at bare minimum. Then we, then I heard, caught wind of what we're going to do with them during the winter time, so that, now, now that money is going up. And the other thing is, they, they took the homeless camp from A Street and put it next to the police station, last minute, thinking that you, as the general public, will just hopefully forget about that, and hopefully it just gets swept under the rug, and no, no big deal, no problem. So, we need real leadership, we need change. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'J.
Where we're at right now is that the only options are to garner more revenue or reduce our levels of service. And reducing levels of service equates to laying off police and firefighters. Since 2021, this council has conducted about four million dollars in operational budget cuts, ensuring that there is not anywhere else that any cuts can be made. In my opinion, we can't keep with the status quo. I'm not in support of laying off any public safety professionals. There are only about four different revenue sources that could bring in the needed six million dollars for growth, and depending on the amount of staff, that may vary. We've recently been asked for eight additional staff members. The four different sources are a food and beverage tax, a utility fee, and a sales tax, and a corporate tax, as previously stated. In June, the council passed a twelve-dollar utility fee. It is worth stating that this is solely dedicated to public safety services. Earlier this year, the council was close to a funding mechanism, but we were met with community concern, so we took a step back and created a public safety advisory committee. My hope is that this will create a strategic roadmap moving forward. a strategic roadmap moving forward to more closely pair the necessary growth of our public safety services with the financial revenues as well. I'm hoping that this can educate the communities surrounding the topic and bring the community on board for the necessary support to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kelsey?
Definitely no easy answer to this. Personally, I'd like to approach Dutch Bros and see if they can just give us a $5 million gift every year, and he can just write it off on his taxes. But that's not going to happen. So as far as funding goes, there's no solvable way to do this without pissing everybody off. You're gonna have to tax. You're gonna have to pay a little more. That's all there is to it. You know, you want a utility fee? You don't want a utility fee? We have no other way around this. You want the services, you gotta pay the money. We're growing, getting bigger. Homeless are getting bigger. Do you just want the homeless or do you want more police? I mean, we gotta figure this out. So there's no easy way around this. I'm just gonna be blunt with y'all.
Thank you. Ms. Kron.
Well, it seems to me that the city budget is there to pay for police, fire, among, also transportation and waste management. So what has gone wrong? Why are we spending the bulk of what's left in the general fund to, to pay for the homeless camps? Why are we not looking at, how are we going to increase our tax base with better businesses coming in? We are losing businesses right now. Sherrys is closing. Big Lots is closing. Dutch Brothers left town. What is happening? This could have been some monies that could have been allocated through property tax to pay for police funding. The police, when, in my ride along, told me that they are even underpaid. They are not paid as much as the rest of the police forces around the area. Why have we not been keeping up with competitive salaries? Yes, the, the police force needs more help. With that $325,000 that we took out of the general fund, we could have maybe paid for two, three, four, five new officers to be trained. So there are things that can be done, and we need change, and we need different decision-making, and we need better leadership.
Thank you. And Ms. Bristol?
Yeah, I am, first of all, I will say that I would support increasing staffing. However, I'm keenly aware of the budget limitations. And over the past several years, and really over the past 30 years in Grants Pass, we've been dealing with a growing problem of keeping our expenses within the existing budget and not having to raise taxes or seek extra monies. Over the past several years, we have addressed multimillion dollar shortfalls, as Ms. O'J mentioned. And the council was able to make, you know, so-called the easiest of the trims. But at this point, we have eliminated unstaffed positions, but we're down to the point, in order to keep our budget in line, we would have to cut actual staff positions. And we don't want to do that, which is why the council enacted a public safety fee of $12 on the utility bill last year, was just to keep the current service level. So if we were to add additional staff, it would only make that financial situation worse. We do know that our current public safety staff are underpaid compared to comparable cities, and that's something we need to deal with as well. I want to just quickly mention on the issue of the homeless camps, the $325,000 that we're spending is partially a legal requirement, and that was a unanimous council decision, including Representative Dwayne Youngker, who serves as both our local state representative and city councillor. He voted for that. And the reason why he did that is because it's an obligation for the city to provide a place for homeless people to go if we're going to make rules about where they can't go.
Okay, diving into that just a little bit deeper, and we're gonna start with Mr. Kelsey. While addressing this issue of public safety funding earlier this year, council was faced with a decision on whether to enact a new tax at council level. They opted for a utility fee increase. But in short, would you be willing to enact a new tax without a ballot vote?
If Kamala Harris is president, absolutely not. But in all honesty, no. We're taxed out enough. We can't afford what we have right now. General citizens can't afford to buy groceries anymore. I mean, we have a town full of senior citizens that can barely scrape by. We can't personally put any more taxes out there. You know, any tax that would come up, I'd vote against wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Ms. Kron?
Yeah, I'm not, I agree with Mark. I am not for further taxing people. I mean, taxes have gone up and up and up, and it always lands on the property tax and the water bill, the utility bills. Yeah, it's, my, the water bill is my highest bill. It's, it's like crazy. So I would be also against Measure 118, which would drive businesses further out of Oregon. I think that's a consideration that we need to look at coming up with our vote here November 5. We need to, yeah, look, I'm not in a position to know what all the sources are, but if I am elected into office, as well as my colleagues, we will find a way to make this work, to increase the funding for our police.
Ms. Bristol?
The public is in a position to know what all the sources are because the city's budget and the budget hearing process is all on public record. The budget's available on the website. You can watch all of the budget committee meetings online if you like. The reason why we implemented the public safety utility fee last year, and I did break the tie-breaking vote on that, because I do back the blue, and I believe that we need public safety in this community. It's important that they are paid a fair wage so that we can recruit and retain public safety officers and firefighters. And we know that they are understaffed, and it would be great to be able to have more of them. But we have just been in a position for the past several years of trying to maintain the staffing levels that we had. They, the majority of their calls are not actually dealing with the homeless. That's a false statement. The reason why they are not spending more time, both in the parks and in these new homeless camps, is because the majority of the calls are dealing with the housed community, and that's a fact. One of the councillors mentioned that the city has, or candidates, rather, mentioned that the city has $200 million worth of property that we can sell. And perhaps she's suggesting that we sell City Hall and Riverside Park, but I don't think that's the right answer. So personally, I will consider looking for realistic solutions, supporting our public safety officers and firefighters, and trying to do the best that we can for our community within the amount of money that we have available to us. I really hated implementing that public safety utility fee, but I did feel it was critically important to buy us some time.
Thank you. And Mr. Scherf?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. While addressing the issue of public safety funding earlier this year, council was faced with a decision on whether to enact a new tax at council level. They opted for the utility fee increase instead. Would you be willing to enact a new tax without a ballot vote?
I would not be willing to enact a new tax. But if the public can pay an additional $12 on their utility bill for fire and public safety, why can't Asante pay for all their own property taxes on the multiple commercial properties that they own in the city?
Thank you. Mr. De La Grange?
Yeah, thank you. So Asante's a nonprofit. We, you know, if, if, if council had a mechanism to make Asante pay for this, we would have already done that. So, you know, that's just not a realistic solution. Selling off city property, we've actually done some of that. I went through all the city properties. I have experienced as a property assessor in the past. And I went through all the city properties. I made a list and I brought it to council. And we've been systematically going through and figuring out which ones we need and which ones we don't. And we've already sold off a few of those. So that's already happened, thanks to us. The $320,000 for homeless is not a real number. $70,000 of that's to demolish the building at the police station, which was gonna happen anyway. There was $120,000 for fencing, which was a typo, and it was more like $20,000. So that $320,000 number that's being repeated over and over is not a real number. But to get to the question of taxing the public without a vote, I was not in favor of the utility fee because essentially that's what that is. Council puts it on the, the utility fee and the public doesn't get a say in it. So that was not something that I supported. We have formed this new public safety advisory committee, and I'm hoping that with working with that committee and working with the community, we can get community support for figuring out what the most palatable funding source for increasing our staffing is.
Great. Ms. Nicholas?
Thank you. I am not for any more taxes on our property bill. We all know that any increase in tax or fees, I mean, it goes to the, the people who are struggling the most. So the landlords pass it on down. Businesses pass it on down. They have to, to make a living. Yes, people can look on the website and be on the budget committee, but people are hardworking, trying to, to do their jobs to support their family and a lot, and don't have time to look into the details of the budget. So I'm just wondering, if the city's so tight on the budget, how did it come up with $6 million for the caveman pool? I love the caveman pool. My kids used to go to the caveman pool a few times a summer. But where did that money come from if we, if we're so tight on the budget? So there are ways to cut the waste. And I really, city government doesn't care about your dollars. So, because it's not theirs. And that goes with any government. So when city needs money, they're gonna go to you in taxes or fees to collect it. They don't care how much things cost because it's not their money. And they don't care what the quality of the service or the good is because it's, the money is not being used for them. So it's your money on other people. There's no accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
And could you repeat the question one more time, please?
Certainly. While addressing the issue of public safety funding earlier this year, council was faced with a decision on whether to enact a new tax at council level. They opted for a utility fee increase instead. Would you be willing to enact a new tax without a ballot vote?
No, absolutely not. You should not be taxing the public without a vote. I would like to also say that there are other ways that we can come up with this funding for law enforcement. Law enforcement must be funded. It must be funded more. They must be paid comparable wage. And they need new equipment, and we've got to do it. The caveman pool is a wonderful place, but the YMCA was capable of taking it over, and the city could have just used that money for law enforcement. $325,000 taken out of the general fund is a real dollar amount that was taken out of the general fund, and that could have gone to law enforcement. And I would also like to say that Riverside Park would be in better hands if it were in private hands. The, it's, it's in private hands during Botnik, and it's a wonderfully run place. So it wouldn't, I'm not advocating for selling Riverside Park, but it would be in better hands at this point if it were in private hands. And so we need, we need to solve our police problem without a new tax, and it can be done by increasing our tax base and not spending money such as on the caveman pool when another agency can take it over. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Meredith?
To directly answer the question related to public safety funding, no, I would not support any new tax without a vote of the people. But as, as I mentioned in the last round of, round of question, questions, we have already solved our public safety funding issue for the intermediate term. We need to do a better job of, of looking at what our true financial position actually is in the general fund. Our general fund, we're probably one of the, one of the healthiest financial, financially healthy cities in the entire state of Oregon, as far as major cities in Oregon. And we have the funding we need because of the new public safety utility fee that was already implemented. We have all the funding we need to take care of our short-term and intermediate-term issues. So there's no, there's no need to continue that discussion in earnest. What we do still need to do is we need to change how that public safety utility fee is calculated for the smallest of businesses in Grants Pass. Because right now, close to 90% of the businesses pay the same monthly fee, which puts the smallest of businesses at a disadvantage. I've already presented the, the council with an idea of how to fix that fee for small businesses, and I hope that they will implement it. And now that we know what that fee is bringing in, because it's been implemented for several months now, now we need to just make a tweak to how that fee is calculated so that the smallest of businesses in Grants Pass are not penalized. So that's all that's left.
Thank you. And Mr. Schlegel?
No, I do not support raising any tax or anything without the vote of the actual citizens that, that are paying that money. It's, it's a little weird what, what Jay was saying, that, you know, the, the city is, is, is not doing well. It's, it's doing, it's broke. He's saying everything is, it sounds like everything is just wonderful. I don't see that. We don't see that. The citizens don't see that. We see homeless camps all over the place. It's, it's sick. The, as far as the $325,000 that Brian is saying is, is a, is a made-up figure, that's weird. We were looking at that figure on the, at the city council meeting. I mean, was that incorrect? Was the city council spreading false promises or false, falsities with the, with that number, with the $325,000? It's, it's bizarre to me. But you tell me. It's not a real number, is what he said. It doesn't make sense. So what we need is new leadership, and we need, we need, we need change, definitely. This is, this is not a good scene here with, with our city.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. O'J.
I'll start by saying that any anti-tax rhetoric is anti-law enforcement because law enforcement is funded by taxes. And additionally, every ordinance passed by the city council can be decided by a vote of the people if challenged by referendum. So the issue at hand is that we have to raise $6 million. We know our expenses are out of line with revenues, and they have been since 2015. The cost of goods such as vehicles, gasoline, payroll, and various materials needed for emergency services are out of the city's control. Other state mandates such as health insurance, PERS, Paid Leave Oregon, and others are also out of our control. Our property taxes are solely dedicated to funding public safety, and they can only increase 3% every year by state law. So when inflation was 5% one year and 8% the next, the city was in the black, and the general fund was required to subsidize that. We, it is true that our public safety wages are not comparable to other cities our size. And these are just some of the issues facing public safety revenue. It is very nuanced. Our firefighters, for example, are operating at two to an engine. Our community entrusted city council to make especially difficult decisions without them having to learn every, every issue, every detail of the issue. And as a public safety professional that truly understands the stressors of being a first responder, not just someone who went for a ride along one time, I would support the most equitable and community-supported funding source. I would be willing to make a very difficult decision at the dais, but thankfully, this council is moving forward with a city committee to help bring the community on board.
Okay, moving on to our next question, and we'll start with Ms. Nicholas. The question is, what do you think is the best accomplishment the city of Grants Pass has in the last two years?
I really can't think of anything that they have accomplished in the last two years because I have just seen our city disintegrate right before my very eyes. I just want to reiterate that we don't have to collect new taxes or fees to solve the law enforcement problem. If we increase the tax base, more money will come in without increasing taxes and fees. Yes, there are good things going on. The Fair Grounds is doing well, but I, I mean, these are private groups. I'm all for privatizing as much as we can because we know private citizens look at costs and look at quality of services because it's their money they're investing. And so it's more efficient and more effective in that way. I guess as a business owner, you have to have a vision. And so that's what I see lacking from the city council. You have to have a long-term vision and long-term goals. And I see the city council just reacting from crisis to crisis to crisis with short-term goals and short-term solutions to them, and that is not working. We need a vision for our city. We need long-term goals. our city, we need long-term goals, and that's the way we can have significant accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
I was running through my mind, what are some good accomplishments? And we, we are in a crisis, and some of the things I, I would readily admit are out of the control of a city council or government anywhere. But the reaction to that has been to always say, well, we need, we need a new tax. As I agree with Indra there, there's a lack of imagination and vision for the future. We do not need to continually tax people. We can invest much more into tourism, into bringing businesses here, and we can come up with better solutions for the problems that we face. There's a vision with, not all, but some of the people on city council, that we need to keep investing in the homelessness business, so to speak. We do not. SB 3115 says that our measures have to be reasonable and objectively reasonable. We do not have to be the ones running them. And so I would love to, to talk about accomplishments, but I think we will in the future with a new city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Meredith?
Some might say the win at the Supreme Court was a pretty big accomplishment, but I'd like to focus on the progress on building a new water treatment plant, because a lot of progress has been made on that project in the last two to three years. We're on track, according to the last update from city staff, we're on track to build that project without, without even having to use any bond financing to do that, because they, they're on track to secure a major federal infrastructure grant to help pay for a good chunk of that. And so that is, that's a massive accomplishment, that if it does come to pass, you know, in the next few months, we, we should be very thankful and, and sing the praises of our, of our public works and other staff that were involved in making, in making that happen. Because at the end of the day, if they do make that happen, they, it looks like there won't have to be any further changes to the utility rates that we pay for our water services, which is of course a great thing as well. So I think that, that stands out as one of the, one of the biggest accomplishments in the past couple of years.
Thank you. Mr. Schlegel?
Big accomplishment. Well, we, we've got the homeless out of the camps. Now, wait a minute, they still go there. They are doing drugs there late at night. Yeah, so that's not fixed. Big accomplishment. We have homeless camps now. Wait, that's not an accomplishment either. We're just throwing a bunch of money at it, okay? This, and then the water treatment plant. It started off with $55 million. Now it's $140 million. That's a great job. It's mismanaged. There's, there was not enough land that was negotiated. That is not an accomplishment either. So right now, I don't, I don't see much accomplishment out of this current city council. And it's unfortunate, because you and I, the citizens, have to put up with it, while we don't have to anymore. It's time for change, and it's time for real leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oje?
This is a fun question. Thank you. In terms of housing, this council has directly incentivized over 400 housing units. We have hired a housing in a neighborhood specialist after heeding the advice from our Housing Advisory Committee. We have created a revolving fund to help financially incentivize the development of low-income affordable housing. We have passed both a housing production strategy and a housing needs analysis that are frameworks with direct objectives on how to navigate our housing crisis. We have leveraged city-owned properties to become multifamily affordable housing units. We are currently working on an STC waiver program that will defer the payment until they receive a certificate of occupancy. We have partnered with Jackson County Housing Authority through our American Rescue Plan dollars to build housing in Josephine County. Some fun stuff is we have continued to support public art with numerous new public art projects, including sculptures, murals, and utility boxes. We've ensured zero waste in our public safety budget. We've reduced the amount of false alarms, of calls that they're responding to. We have adopted a plan that will have an actualized savings of over $2 million in energy costs once implemented. We prevented the privation of downtown parking enforcement, which has had a direct cost savings to the city. We have repealed the zoning transition overlay after hearing it was not working from the home builders and stakeholders. We've expanded Urban Renewal Agency grants for local businesses, and we've continued funding events such as our Christmas tree lighting, Art Along the Rogue, and Fourth of July.
Thank you. Mr. Kelsey?
I'd just like to say thank you for starting the trails up at Dollar Mountain.
Thank you. Ms. Crowe?
Well, I think something that my challenger said was, we incentivized, we incentivized, we incentivized. But I don't see that anything has actually been started. Like the housing, ground has not been broken with these 400-plus units that are supposedly going to be built. We have the, the water treatment plant that now has a homeless camp on it. How are we gonna move that to start, even break ground for the water treatment plant? The water treatment plant is costing double now than what it was back when it was first came into to, as an idea. They took land from a business owner in town through eminent domain. That does, that does not sound like accomplishments to me. I would like to look, I'm trying to look around the city, but what I see is empty storefronts, more downtown than ever before, businesses leaving town, and a shortage of funds to create a bigger tax base. I don't know.
Thank you. Ms. Bristol?
Well, I want to thank Kathleen Crowe for mentioning eminent domain, because it was actually my challenger here, who was one of the four city councillors who voted to take the Copeland property for the water treatment plant, which is an exciting addition that's coming next year. I think that the 400 units of housing and a lot of the housing accomplishments that councillor Oje so eloquently mentioned are definitely our number-one accomplishment over the past several years. People are living in Cathedral Square. It has 56 units of people who are living in those that was a city-partnered project with Jackson County Housing Authority, as well as Josephine County Housing Authority. So housing, definitely huge. We successfully moved the homeless out of the parks after winning the Supreme Court lawsuit. We're still working on that issue, but there are a number of accomplishments. We have a brand-new remodeled downtown welcome center with public restrooms. We're working on a downtown plaza. We successfully sponsored the downtown, the destination marketing organization that's helping to bring more tourism into our city. We have a number of new courts at our playground, courts at our parks and new playgrounds. We have new bike trail at the B Street Jumps. We have worked on trails at Dollar Mountain. There's so much good things going on in Grants Pass. Don't get obsessed with the homeless problem. We're gonna deal with that. We've been dealing with it, and we're going to continue dealing with it. A managed campsite or shelter is absolutely the way to go.
Thank you. Mr. Sherv?
So, the current council is made up of eight different people with a mayor. That's nine. You got three of them sitting up here. So yes, there's a crapload of stuff that's happened. I mean, my wife's absolutely thrilled that you guys didn't get rid of the flowerpots, because when I was councillor, they were trying to get rid of that to cut budget, and my wife would have strung me up. So I'm glad that that stayed around. But this, the three candidates sitting up here that are incumbents, which it cracks me up because they're, I wouldn't go with that. But basically, they're only part of the, part of the council. So it is a whole body. What I've seen and what I've heard from the community is that these three specific people have not listened to them, and they, all three of them in our last forum proclaimed that they want a low-barrier shelter put into place. So that's what they bring to the table. There is a lot of accomplishments that the city had, but you, I'm looking at all the pictures back there. There's more than these three people that sit on the council and governing board of the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. De La Grange?
You know, it's hard to follow up on what council president Oje and Mayor Bristol have already stated with our accomplishments. They listed a whole longer list of items that we've accomplished here on council, and our opponents struggled to mention even one thing, and I don't know if that's because they're, they're ill-informed, or they just don't want to give any credit to the things that have happened over the past four years. But just so everyone's aware, everything that was said from councillor Oje and Mayor Bristol, those are huge accomplishments. We've been, over the past three, four years, getting hounded by the public about the homeless in the parks, the homeless camping in the parks. It's been an overriding theme of our term. And guess what? The best accomplishment, arguably, is that the homeless are no longer camping in the parks. Can they still go to the parks? Of course they can. Anyone could go and hang out in the park if they want to, but the homeless are not camping in the parks anymore. So we got that done right after the Supreme Court decision was made, and we're managing that situation. So for, for everyone up here to not be able to name one accomplishment is just silly.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next question. Mr. Meredith, you will begin on this one. Fairly short and sweet. Do you support rebuilding caveman pool?
Yes, yes, I do. In fact, when, when we all got sticker shock, when, when they came out and said it's gonna cost $12 to $13 million to rebuild caveman pool, and we all had a sense of sticker shock, at least most of us, I think, did. I wrote a article and did a little analysis on, on, does that make sense? And I got it published, and it was, it was shared by, I'm not sure who shared it, but somebody shared it on a number of Facebook pages. And, and it solicited hundreds and hundreds of comments from the public. And what I, what I found after reading all those hundreds of comments is that the public in Grants Pass want to rebuild it. And that's, that's the most important part of this equation. Everybody wants to keep that, that gem that, that has been, you know, part of this community for so long. So now the question is, how do you rebuild it the most cost-effectively? And, and they went back to the drawing board, and they found a way to, to do it a lot more cost-effectively, and ended up cutting the budget by over 50%. And so a good job to those that spearheaded that process. I think maybe we could, could have done it maybe a little bit cheaper, but the more, more important thing is it's about to be rebuilt, and which is what the public wants.
Thank you. Mr. Schlegel?
The public, yes, they probably want a, a nice pool. And so do I, so do I. Pool is great. $12 to $13 million over these other issues that the, that the public is, is having. The fire departments are having a hard time getting staff. The police department, they're having a hard time getting staff. They're overworked and underpaid. They can barely get their equipment running. But hey, let's, how about some priorities here by the, by the current council? The priorities of building a pool, or homeless camps, or how about, how about we just, how about the, how about the city council do what they're supposed to be doing, and that's to make sure that the security is there, do the current, make sure that the current roles are filled. Make sure that we're doing the, the bare minimums here, at least, before we start throwing around millions upon millions of dollars that are probably gonna be mismanaged in the first place. That's the best I, I mean, just right off the top of my head, just saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oje?
A needed quality of a city councillor is one that's able to juggle multiple issues at one time. It's important that we do focus on things like caveman pool and public safety simultaneously, because that's good governance. I was on the council when we decided to annex the caveman pool property to include it into the Urban Renewal Agency to help leverage funds to make it successful. I also supported the caveman pool task, task force that was a subset of our Parks Advisory Committee to help guide us and advise us on that decision. As well, I was in support of reducing the project finances by half, and I am in support moving forward. I think it's a very important community staple.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Kelsey?
It's kind of a hard toss-up, because for one, I grew up in caveman pool, so I'm a little biased on that. But at the same time, we're missing 15 firefighters on the fire department. So you gotta kind of weigh where you're gonna go with that. And my choice right now would be 15 firefighters.
Ms. Crowe?
So I'm returning to that idea that the YMCA wanted to come in and help mitigate that building, rebuilding the pool. I went back and read an old article in, from June, where that whole thing started with having the YMCA partnership. And it was advised at that time that it didn't even make sense to put so much money into an outdoor pool that could maybe be used a third of the year. So building, having, giving that over to the YMCA to partnership with, building an indoor pool that might be used more frequently and more of the year, probably would have been a better investment. Now that nothing has been done yet on it, the cost has gone up from $6.5 million to $12 million. Where's that money gonna come from? That's my question.
Ms. Bristol?
Yeah, caveman pool has been here for 70 years, and I think everybody loves an outdoor pool on a sunny summer day here. It's important to understand that capital improvements and the capital budget are different than the operating budget, and capital improvements are one-time funds, as opposed to something like adding staff that has ongoing costs. They do come from different pots of money, and sometimes it's important that we keep those separate. And that's, the general fund is the money that the city council can allocate for operational, but capital improvement funds need to be used for capital improvements. I think it's important to our community that we have a well-rounded city, and we know that Grants Pass residents love their parks, and they love caveman pool. So I'm happy to be part of the solution in getting it rebuilt, and I'm gonna take some personal credit that when the fund, when the expenses were getting out of control, and the council had been identifying the kind of pool we would like to see in the future, and it was getting more and more expensive, that councillor De La Grange and I personally went in and spoke with the city manager and said, hey, we have $6.5 million of funds that we can spend on this pool. How much pool can we get for $6.5 million rather than a $12 million pool? And the staff came back to us with a plan, and we presented it to the city council, and they approved it. So we're very much looking forward to that project going forward, and having another 70 years' worth of kids being able to play and learn how to swim.
Thank you. Mr. Sherv?
I grew up on the caveman pool, just like a few people up here. Yeah, I got a soft spot for it. I definitely think that the community needs it, and I'm a little bit biased, because I got two high school kids that are swimmers, and we could definitely use the facility. So as well as there is different allocations, as Sarah Bristol said, within the budget, it is absolutely true. So you're not necessarily robbing Peter to pay Paul when it, when we're talking about these improvements. So yes, I would be behind finishing up the caveman pool. I would also like to entertain with that caveman pool is previously, a few years back, the Grants Pass School District actually approached the city and wanted to swap some properties. And caveman pool was actually thrown up in the mix, and I believe that would be a good property for the Grants Pass School District to actually take over.
Thank you. Mr. De La Grange?
I do support the rebuilding of caveman pool. It's been institution in this city for 70 years. I remember previous councillor Barry Eames singing the praises of when he was a kid swimming in caveman pool. So there's been thousands and thousands and thousands of people and generations of kids and families that have enjoyed that facility. And, you know, I, my, my daughter and I have enjoyed that facility, as have other people up here. There's, there's a lot of people in this town that don't have their own pool, and there's a lot of people in this town that, you know, aren't confident enough to go swim in the river, for good reason. And so to have an outdoor community pool for our community, I think is vital. We want to be a well-rounded city. We don't want to focus on just a couple of things. There's a lot of things that the city council needs to focus on and give its attention to simultaneously. So- So the fact that this council was able to take a project at the pool from 13 million, cut that cost in half to six and a half million and keep pretty much most of the stuff we were looking to get out of that project is an absolute win for this community. The funding source is Urban Renewal. That money can't be used for police. It can't be used for fire. This is capital project money, not operational funding money. So I definitely support where we're going with the pool and I'm excited.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas.
As stated earlier, I love the Caveman Pool. I would just, I just would go to the lists that Vanessa read, that super-long list, that Sarah read another list and Brian clapped too. It sounded like a whole lot of money on stuff. And so I really feel we need to prioritize. In a land of plenty money, we could spend on everything and I would love that too. And that's what I want to get back to with our city. Let's have our city have the funds to do all that without compromising our essential services such as law enforcement and the police. Six million dollars makes it sound like it's nothing. That's a lot of money. I mean, I would love to go out to dinner every night, but guess what? I can't do that because I don't have the money. So as, as families and individuals, we cut back in this, in this time of high inflation, gas prices, the, the bills going up, with my business increases in, in the lease. We have to cut and we can't just spend. We need to prioritize. And we need more revenue. That means taking care of the homeless that are on the streets, that are, that's keeping our city from prospering with businesses and families that want to move in. Thank you.
And finally, Ms. Marshall.
I am very much for the Caveman Pool, but we don't need to be, we could give it over to District Seven that does use it quite a bit anyway. And with, as, as Clint Sherf said, there could be a property swap. So there would probably be better solutions there. It is a wonderful place for kids to go in the summer, but somebody else can take it over and it would still be there. And with regards to the budgeting issues that were mentioned, I would just like to then reiterate, we need better budgeting, obviously. We don't have enough fire protection. We don't have enough police protection. So we need for those things to be budgeted much better. And I would also like to say that a lot of the accomplishments are unrealized accomplishments. 400 housing units was mentioned and 56 apparently are built. So that's, that's a pretty big gap. So there's a list of, of accomplishments that are unrealized and I'd like the public to keep that in mind. And I love the Caveman Pool, but somebody probably needs to take it over because we can't afford it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, candidates. We are going to move from questions into closing comments. So just a reminder, you will have two minutes again now with the yellow light still being entered 30-second warning. If we can begin closing comments with Ms. Marshall.
So first of all, thank you for being here. Thank you, Chamber, and thank you, Daily Carrier, and thank you, audience. The election is about ensuring that your voices are heard, your values are respected, and your future is in capable hands. My career as a teacher and a debate coach taught me the importance of listening carefully, thinking critically, and inspiring others to engage with the issues that matter most. I've spent years helping students find their voices and now I'm ready to use mine to represent you. Beyond education, I have also spent four years working to restore constitutional governance in our city and county. That experience has given me a deep understanding of how to navigate tough political landscapes while staying true to my principles. I know how to advocate for these changes effectively. Government belongs to the citizens and we must return it to them. When I moved here nearly 30 years ago, I fell in love with an independent, feisty, innovative people. I want to be a part of the solution to keep these characteristics and prevent us from becoming a people overburdened and overcome by a faceless, nameless bureaucratic state that doesn't know us and doesn't care about us. I want people to move here for these values, not because they are made comfortable while they are killing themselves with drugs. With our quirky, can-do spirit and our deep commitment to the belief that our rights and responsibilities come from God, we can create success after success and keep our successes here rather than chasing them away. The degradation of our town and our future prospects must end. So I asked for your vote, Victoria Marshall, City Council Ward Two. It's time for real leaders. It's time for change. Thank you.
Mr. Meredith.
So I'm glad there is a county commissioner in the office tonight, in the, in the room tonight. And I'm glad there, all the council candidates are here tonight because the, the number-one job of state, of local government at the county and city level in Oregon is public safety, generally police and fire in our case. I've spent countless hours, again, both on the job and off the job advocating for public safety and looking at public safety, police, fire, law enforcement funding solutions. A lot of the challenges that are foremost in our minds that we have to deal with, particularly the homeless challenge, stems from, and, and the, the various challenges that our police deal with on a daily basis, stems from addiction issues. And I look forward to, I certainly can't explain this in, in two minutes tonight, but I look forward to being your city councillor for Ward Two because what I see as the opportunities ahead is what I call the local war on hard drugs. And, you know, I grew up in a small town in Wisconsin and there was a neighboring town that everybody knew. So when I got, when I was 16, turned 16 and got my driver's license, everybody knew, do not speed in that town. Grants Pass can be the same way with drug issues. We can be, the pendulum can swing back the other way and we can be known as the, the city where if you're dealing with, in drugs, you don't want to be here. But we need a partnership with our criminal justice system at the county level. We need a strong criminal justice system with the county. We need a strong police force and we need to partner with the public and everybody who's, who's got a stake in this, which is every citizen, resident, visitor, and, and business in Grants Pass. We can do this. The pendulum can swing back the other way and, and there will be financial rewards and of course, cost, you know, living rewards as a result. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr., excuse me, Mr. Schlegel.
Well, we've heard a lot about accomplishments up here and there, there are many accomplishments. However, those cannot be enjoyed with what we're going through today with all these homeless camps. It is a big problem. And it's a big problem. And I know people are sick and tired of it. So it's got to be fixed before we can go on and throw millions here, do this, do that, underfund various police departments and, and firefighters. They are underfunded. It is important that we fund them. That's going to, that's, that's our number-one priority. Fund the police, or that's the second priority. The first priority is to begin, get the drugs out of the parks. That's, that just hasn't happened. We keep, we keep hearing that the parks are clean. They are not clean. I go, I'm, I go on Park Watch and I, I go out there, volunteer my time. I end up picking up all of these drugs, all of these paraphernalia that, that they leave behind. It's a mess. It's a mess. And so the drug, the, the parks are not clean. They're not clean. They're still going over there. They're, they're, the problem is still there. We've multiplied the problem by, with these ridiculous hopeless parks or camps. So as far as leadership goes, I know what leadership is. I've seen it in the Marine Corps. And unfortunately, this current group of city council members, they, they're not cutting the mustard. They're, the leadership is not there. In some cases, they couldn't even manage a trash can. So we got to fix the, the drug problem first and then make sure that the police department gets paid. And that'll bring all the businesses back. That'll bring all the businesses back that are these empty storefronts that we're seeing. So please vote for the conservative slate up here. It's, it's time for real change. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oje.
We haven't had a chance to talk about housing this evening, so I did want to take a moment to do that. It's important that we try to help lower the cost of housing and that can be done by developing a wide variety of housing types. It is crucial for the city to help support the private market's ability to provide housing at different price levels. This approach can help increase the overall supply of housing and especially since the, the public funding for affordable housing is extremely limited. The city could participate in lot clustering, land banking, and site acquisition as a few examples of how to help ensure a development of varied housing types. There are larger opportunities for multifamily housing units such as a multi-unit tax deferral program. This would allow a deferral of property taxes on underdeveloped or vacant lots that are developed into multifamily housing units. These properties are already paying a pretty minimal amount of property tax, so deferring them for a few more years is a wise trade-off because it eventually will be tax revenue for our public safety departments. Another key goal of mine is to ensure that the Allen Creek Road properties are developed into residential housing units and not donated to a nonprofit. The city for years has been priming this residential property for housing development, so it's really important that that's seen through. And lastly, the city has an Urban Renewal Agency fund that can help leverage public-private resources to create multifamily market-rate housing that hopefully has mixed-use elements. In conclusion, I'm excited to be here this evening, excited to hopefully continue serving our community into a second term. When choosing a candidate, it's important to support someone who brings real experience to the table and stays focused on serving the community above all else. A nonpartisan leader who genuinely cares about people, brings common-sense solutions, and unites with others to deliver real results. I come to every meeting prepared and dedicate myself to this work out of my love for our community. Please vote for me, Ward Four, this November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kelsey.
I'd appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe.
So some of the first things that I would do to make this town, the quality of life here in this town, is to put up signs in all the parks and the public spaces that this is a drug-free zone. I think that this would help the police do their job. I think it would empower them to be able to keep these places safe. Safety's a big issue in our town. When businesses are being shut down because people are damaging their property because they have to put up, keep their doors locked during opening hours, because they have to put up iron fences in their entrances so that people don't sleep in them and defecate in them, to put up fencing around their parking in the alleys. I've talked to many business owners and I've gotten their feedback. I'm listening to the residents. I'm listening where, what their needs are and what's important to them. Some of what has happened here at the city council is that they've shut down public, the public comment from three minutes to two minutes. That doesn't sound like added listening. There have been many business owners in the city council meetings saying, we need help. The homeless are damaging our property. They're stealing from us. We need help. And they're not getting the help. They're in the, right now organizing a coalition of 50 businesses plus to, I don't know what they're going to do with that, but they're going to do something. So I want to see change. We need a change in leadership. I am committed to this community. I once thought I'd be living here the rest of my life. Now I'm not so sure. But if I get voted in, in this new city council with my coworkers and my colleagues here, we will make a change. We will bring better leadership.
Thank you. Ms. Bristol.
Hi, thank you. It's been such an honor and a privilege to serve as the mayor of my hometown, Grants Pass, these past four years. I am a proud advocate for Grants Pass. I'm proud that my kids are third-generation cavemen. I think it's really important that your mayor be an advocate for the people of Grants Pass and working on your behalf. And that's exactly what I do. We do take in a lot of information, both from public comment during meetings as well as email and other people we know around town. I know a lot of people in this town and I'm hearing that people like Grants Pass. That's why they live here. That's why they come here as tourists. And I want to keep that going. I don't think that our situation is as grim as some of the people here want to make it. I do think that experience matters. And I think what I've heard tonight is that you have three really outstanding candidates for Grants Pass City Council as well as the mayor, who are willing to put in the work and show up and be there for you. I know that when my opponent was on the Urban Planning Commission, he did miss about a third of the meetings. And his mayor attendance is absolutely critical because you run the meetings and you can't do that remotely. I've been re-elected here. I got 68% support last year when some people who don't like me tried to recall me. But I think what that tells me is that Grants Pass does support me and that I'm listening to the majority. My opponent has not yet won an election. So I'm going to keep going, doing what I do every day, giving it my all on behalf of the citizens here. I don't work for the council. I don't work for a political party. I work for you. And I'm going to keep doing that to the best of my ability every day. And I hope that you will continue to support me with your vote. Sarah Bristol, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sherf.
Well, thank you all for coming. I do want to point out, we've got councillor Pell and we've got councillor Valerie in the, in the house here. Councillor De La Grange, councillor Vanessa Oje, and mayor Sarah Bristol. These are volunteer unpaid positions. I do want to give a hand up to everybody that served and, because everybody has a passion for a city of Grants Pass. And they wouldn't do it as a volunteer position with no pay if they didn't have passion for Grants Pass. The argument we have tonight and what we've, what we go into this election with is the community is not happy. The community feels that they're not being listened to. The community feels that a few of the members on the council have an agenda and they don't like it. So I'm here representing the community from the people that have yelling and screaming at me as well as a community member who lives half a block off of Sixth Street and has to push homeless people off of my neighbor's yard, off of my yard. My neighbors actually here coming to attend to watch me. Because it is a plague that happens on a nightly basis. So I bring a little bit of experience to me. And I mentioned Mr. Pell back there. Yes, Sarah Bristol said I lost election. That's the guy back there who won by eight votes, man, and a recount. I'd like to get him again, but he's, he's done good for the community too, so I'm, I'm happy that he won. I'd like to serve your, this community. So if you've, if you're still complaining and you still want some change, I represent change. Vote for Clint Sherf, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, Mr. De La Grange.
Yeah, thank you. It's been nice to talk to the community tonight and to share our positions and our accomplishments and to talk about the issues that have been important and are, continue to be important in the community. As everyone knows, as Clint said, we're unpaid volunteers. We're here because we care about the community. And I would venture to guess that every single one of us up here does not agree on everything. But what we do agree on is that we all care about the community and we all want what's best for the community. Our opponents tonight have been repeating the phrase, real change. We're going to bring real change. We're going to bring strong leadership. And they keep saying that over and over and over. And there hasn't been a lot of specifics to back that up. But I've been taking notes and the, the few specifics I was able to pull out of the conversation was they want to have the city support drug treatment with the homeless people. The city doesn't have a public health department. It's very important for city councillors to know the departments that the city has and does not. We are not in the business of drug treatment. That is county, that is state. I've even heard one candidate say they would be in favor of requiring mandatory drug treatment, which goes against the freedom principles that they, they always talk about. Other things that they would like to do is they would like to shut down the homeless camps with no viable alternative, which will push the homeless all through the businesses, all downtown, all into the neighborhoods. So that's another thing they'll do. They talked about selling off city property, which we've already done. We've sold off the property that we can. Any additional sales would be detrimental to city-running business. Heard one person talk about privatizing the parks. Heard one person talk about putting up signs in the parks to say no drug use. That's not going to do anything, guys. I mean, we need real solutions and I just want to say, I haven't heard a lot of real solutions, but we have produced results over the past four years. We took- We took a situation, and we've improved it, and we will continue to improve it over the next four years.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Nicholas.
Thank you. I guess I just keep sitting here and thinking about, I'm circling back to the top priority of residents in our city. I'm out there a lot talking with people. I talk with business people. I talk with customers. I talk with my neighbors. I've gone throughout the neighborhoods. Public safety and homelessness, the vagrants on the street is the top priority, and until we do something about that, nothing is going to change. And our current city council, my opponent can say, there's no solutions, there's no solutions. I've heard many solutions. He says that at the city council meetings, right after someone gets up and says a solution. So that's just a slogan. But in two minutes, it's hard to give all your solutions or all your facts. There's a lot we can do, and we will do, and I will act if I'm elected city councillor. I, I have a neighbor that just moved in a year ago. They're wondering, right, right up here in town, they're wondering why they moved here. And I don't, they have a wrecked van parked outside their house. They have to call the police. They thought this was a beautiful place to come, and now they're not so sure, and you don't blame them. I go up to my business, I see people with backpacks, carts. It's just depressing. It just gets to you. I have a neighbor who's afraid to go for a walk for the, being accosted. I get to my shop, there's always nearly every day trash all over, at least two or three people on the stairs by my shop. I, I've called the police non-emergency many times for trespassing. It's just a depressing place to live, and I think that's why it's hard to focus on the good things, and I would love to, but it's hard to when we have this going on. I will change that. I want to work for you and earn your support. Thank you.
All right. That concludes the forum this evening. We want to thank all those who attended here in person and also via RV TV, wherever they are, and will in the future when they see the, see it's being taped as well, so. And especially, we want to thank all of the candidates, all 10 of you who came, and especially for your participation and for bringing your deeply held commitment to your ideals and your collective concern for the betterment of our town. So thank you, and good night, everyone.